Your mic is off?
Not now. Hello, am I in? Yes, us?
You are.
Alright.
You're live.
Just took me this long to get in.
It's good to have a little lead time.
Jacob, I want to thank you for that picture you took of us on Saturday for the Booster Club. That was awesome.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for coming down.
President Johnson, would you like me to start with the Welcome to the Virtual Meeting explanation? Oh, you're muted, my dear.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. If you want to wait a couple of seconds until we do hit 7 o'clock on the nose, though, please. And then, yeah, you can definitely proceed with that.
Welcome to this virtual meeting of the Board of Education. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. When speaking, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or name of the speaker as shown on a computer screen. The public participation at board meetings is per Bylaw 0167.3, and this applies to the virtual meeting as well. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you are not speaking. There is a chat box found in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. This is also the method by which you would sign up to be a guest speaker this evening. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. The board president will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting as the guests are calling in by telephone. This particular meeting has an opportunity for public comment under item number 12 on the agenda. If you would like to register to make comments during this particular meeting, please type your name, address, and topic in the chat box. All Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote due to the virtual nature of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded, and the recording includes anything typed in the chat box. And with that, the meeting is yours, President Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Opfer. The Manawa Board of Education exists to lead and serve to support the education of all students focused on developing policies, retaining highly effective staff, acting on behalf of the community, and ensuring sustainability of the community to open and secure communication. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Petke, if you could call roll me. Mrs. Petke is maybe perhaps not on here.
I'm just checking roster.
Bobby Joe is having a hard time finding how to get on. She does not have the link, so if someone could share it with her, that'd be great.
Got it.
Are you doing that, or shall I?
You would, please, Dr. Opfer. You can probably do it far faster than I can.
Okay. Okay, that should now be in her email inbox, right at the top.
We'll give her just a moment here to get on.
Is Stan on?
I didn't see him either.
Stan is also not on.
Can I get on my phone?
Let me just invite them one more time.
Yeah, they can't get on virtually. They certainly can do it by phone as well. I did text both of them, and I have not gotten a reply.
Alright, it's not pushing them to the top, so let me try another method and see if that will work.
I'm going to try calling them individually.
Okay, and I'm sending them also the packet from earlier today, so... See if that will... They can get the link at the top of the agenda. My computer is working very slowly, though, at the moment.
It didn't seem to me like the link on the top of the agenda worked.
Well, that's not helpful. Let's try it again.
We got Stan.
Oh, good.
And then Bobby. Hi, Stan.
Alright, perfect. Since you're both are on, we were at the point where, Mrs. Petke, could you please call the roll?
Sorry.
Mr. Horr.
Here.
Mr. Holman.
Here.
Mr. Scheller.
Here.
Mrs. Petke here. Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
I am here as well. Thank you. Dr. Opfer, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Alright, thank you. Alright, our first item on the agenda tonight is filling board vacancy Zone 4 Village of Augsburg Town of St. Lawrence. We'll start with the applications and interviews to fill board vacancy by board appointment. We have a list of questions that we will ask each of you in turn. And what I'll do is, is I will do one question per applicant at a time. So Sandra, I will start with you, if you want to briefly introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Sandra Ryerson. I live out just outside of Augsburg. I've been in the school district for approximately 38 years. And I'm not sure what else you'd like to know for right now.
Alright, thank you. And Luke, if you'd like to introduce yourself?
I'm Luke Seeger, and I've also been in the school district. I was born and raised here, went through school and graduated from Manawa School.
Alright, so we'll start with our first question. Mrs. Ryerson, why do you want to be on the Board of Education?
I think that the Board of Education is a key functioning part of our school district to be able to continue to have this school district move forward in excellence as far as the academic levels that we are trying for our children and grandchildren to receive. And I think that my previous experience as a continuous improvement person, internal auditor, trainer, someone who understands the ins and outs of some of the protocols of standards and things like that would be a benefit to the school board and to the Augsburg area.
Alright, thank you. Does any board member have any follow-up questions for that particular question? Okay, Mr. Seeger, why do you want to be on the Board of Education?
I've always actually, I've been talking about this probably for eight years now, back and forth, and I'm kind of, there's a lot of questions and things that have been brought up, you know, everybody's on the inside looking in. And I mean, I have five kids in the school district, all in school right now, and I just want to help do whatever is needed to, you know, keep the education going, keep the sports part of it going. Like I say, I just want anything to, how do I say it? I want to be there and help make decisions for the future of my kids, my grandkids, everybody. We're not going anywhere. I think it's time to step up and help. I mean, there are some other things. I coached football at a level for like six years already, so getting those kids, getting all the students. I've coached Pop Warner. I all with basketball, which I'm not a very good basketball coach, but I do because nobody else wanted to step up, so I'm willing to step up wherever I can. And I think it all came in hand, and if I can help any other way, I guess that's what I would like to do.
Thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions regarding this answer? Okay, our second question, Mrs. Ryerson. In the school district of Manawa, what do you believe to be the most pressing problems we are currently facing? And what would you do to address the problem?
I think probably the most pressing thing that I see from reviewing grading of our overall state scores is that we're on a bit of a downward trend. And I'd like to, you know, be able to understand what those key factors are that are causing us to not be able to turn that around and at least be holding steady. But I'd like to really see that we're actually coming up. We come up in some areas and we go down in others. The overall trend as a school district for the last five years or so has been a downward trend. And I think academically, that's what we need to do for our students, is figure out what is the problem that we're not meeting those standards? And being able to make sure that our students, when they're leaving, have the best educational opportunity to move on in life, whether that's going on to a college or a tech or just going and getting a job and moving forward with their lives.
Thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Mr. Seeger, in the school district of Manawa, what do you believe to be the most pressing problems we are currently facing? And what would you do to address these problems?
I'll be completely honest. I don't believe I have any answers for that question. I mean, I would, there's things I believe in and I like, and, you know, college is awesome, and I'm going and stuff. But I would think, I guess I would like a little bit more of the hands-on, you know, like... I would say they're not getting a good enough education at like actual just work, hard work. Like trade, learning skills, things like that. Of course, that's what I mean. I'm in a trade skill, so it's important to me because it's kind of like a dying here. I think that's probably one thing that I would try to help, and I won't be, wouldn't be able to do it myself, obviously. But I think with everybody, have a better fighting chance to maybe at least talk about it and see how we can do moving forward with it. Education is important, even in skilled trades, all those things are very important to me. College is important for some people, some people, so, you know. Skilled trade would be good for them for the future. That was, I guess, that's what I think would help with, or try to.
Thank you. Does any board member have any follow-up questions to that answer? Alright, Mrs. Ryerson, what would be one of your main objectives if you were on the school board?
Oh, gosh. I think, you know, getting to understand the system, really understanding how the ins and outs of how the school system works would probably be my first priority, to maybe really understand what path we're on, what paths have been tried, and, you know, what the possible paths are for the future, you know. I mean, I read the school board minutes and that type of thing on a regular basis. And believe it or not, I do read all hundred and some odd pages of it. The, I guess, you know, there's some areas that, you know, I'm not really sure what, where things are going. So I guess my, you know, biggest thing is understanding where we've been, what's been tried, and where we want to go forward, and how can I help in that process.
Thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Okay, Mr. Seeger, what would be one of your main objectives if you were on the school board?
To sit quietly and listen, figure out what's actually happening, and then maybe try to give some input, you know. I don't know everything, you know. I don't, I don't know exactly what's going on, and I and I like a lot of things, but there's nothing worse than being at a function somewhere, and somebody says, well, they're doing this, or they're doing that. I guess to kind of understand those things so I can set things straight. Because I talk to a lot of people, you know, I just feel like a part of it would make it easier to understand and to explain to others, you know, why choices are made.
Alright, thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Alright, Mrs. Ryerson, how do you handle conflict when someone has a differing point of view from yours?
I think we need to make sure that when we're looking at a different point of view, what facts are we both looking at? You know, are we, are we looking at it in an emotional situation? Are we looking at it as far as facts? So being able to understand, you know, where the, you know, where I've got my information coming from the other individual or individuals may have their information coming from, and be able to look at those and say, you know, can we, can we come to common points on this? But it's trying to take that emotional part out of it and go with facts, because we can, we can talk about facts. It's really hard to be able to work around emotion. I guess that's only my, based on my experience that I've had in working with teams to problem solve. There's always been a lot of coming into an area, and there's a lot of territorial... Feeling, you're going to mess with my stuff, and that, and then it's being able to back up and say, you know, what are the facts? What are the steps? What are the things that we can agree on, and then go from there?
Nice, thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Alright, Mr. Seeger, how do you handle conflict when someone has a differing point of view from yours?
Oh. I explain to them how I feel and then actually listen to what they think, and, you know, I guess I would have to agree, you know, knowing the facts, and that's part of being a part of something, to know the facts. So, you know, I don't, I have strong beliefs as far as, you know, what things I think, what things, you know, I'm not going to lie. I am pretty strong on that, but I guess, listen and explain to them what I know, and if, if that doesn't help them, then I guess I would suggest them to go to somebody else and discuss the issue.
Alright, thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Alright, Mrs. Ryerson, what are your ideas for increasing community involvement with the school board?
I think that if I were, if I'm in a position to be representing Augsburg-St. Lawrence area, I think that, you know, I would want to be talking more with the, you know, individuals within that area, talking with them as far as, okay, here's, here's a key thing coming up as far as the school district is concerned. You know, getting more of their involvement and feedback as far as what is it that you, what do you feel that we need within, you know, their specific areas, whether it's their kids or their grandkids, or just overall, what direction do they feel that this, you know, the overall district should be going? And, you know, what do they feel is best for our particular area? So I would concentrate my efforts as trying to get more people in our area here to, you know, be talking about what's going on versus, oh, the school board did that again. You know, having them to try and be more a part of, let's have the discussions before there's a whole sorts of decisions being made.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Thank you. Mr. Seeger, what are your ideas for increasing community involvement within the school district?
Community involvement, that's, that's a pretty tough one. I think just, just doing what what you guys are doing as far as the school district, you know, making the school nicer, making it, things happening, just increase, will automatically increase some of that. So as far as maybe just have some more activities, have some more, and send out mailers, whatever emails to kids, just to get more people to come to stuff, and really just talk about it, you know, talk about the things that are coming up, be verbal, be vocal. You know, just get everybody, try to get as many people involved as you can, whether it's relatives, family, friends, or what it may be. Just every time there's a function or something, just try to get them there. And that's, that's what's really going to bring everybody to get there. Any kind of functions and stuff, it's just, it's going to keep bringing more people into the stuff. So as far as that goes, I guess I'd just be as verbal as I can be about, about the school district, you know, and just get people, make people aware of what's actually happening, and come check out the school, and blah, 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 you know. Can go on and on, so.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Alright, thank you. And finally, Mrs. Ryerson, what will you do to help the board achieve its goals?
Well, again, I think that understanding where we've been as far as things that have been tried, how, how things have maybe changed or been evolving, and the current outlook for, of the school board. I'm hoping that I'd be able to bring some additional ideas and, you know, maybe skill sets to help move that process forward. I do have to say that helping to homeschool my grandchildren this COVID-19 opportunity with both the Manawa School District, and I also helped through some of the Shabroigan North School District stuff, and, and everything that, you know, I think, you know, there's some serious need to be looking forward as, as far as contingency plans and things like that. So I'd hope to be able to help as, you know, what ifs, and be building up some of those areas.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Alright, thank you. Again, Mr. Seeger, finally for you, what will you do to help the board achieve its goals?
Um, I'll do whatever I can. No, it's just, I'll listen, and I, again, I'll bring another outlook on. So I've been, I'm pretty big in the sports, academically, my kids are all do very well in school. I just kind of, I guess I can come in too, and, and, you know, I have that five kids and things in a district, so as far as, you know, even, even listening to some of the things they have to say and bringing them to meetings and concerns and stuff like that, I think I can help there. And just, I think I'm pretty good about thinking outside the box and just a different view on a lot of different things, I guess, so.
Alright, any follow-up question? Alright, thank you both very much. At this time, we do need to take a vote of the board to fill the vacancy. We will start with Mr. Johnson.
Did you say Mr. Johnson?
I did say Mr. Johnson.
Okay. I would, Luke Seeger.
Mr. Scheller.
Sandra Ryerson.
Mrs. Petke.
Mr. Seeger.
Mr. Holman.
I'd actually like to see them both on, but since I can only have one, I'm going to pick Mrs. Ryerson.
Mr. Horr.
Mrs. Ryerson.
And I am going to go with Mr. Seeger, which leaves us, being a Board of Six, as being a vote of three and three. And I did ask Dr. Opfer this afternoon what should happen, should we end up in a tie? And your response was from Mr. Rennig. Is that correct, Dr. Opfer?
Yes, he reiterated what is in Bylaw 142.3. by law 142.5, which is also in state statute.
Okay, and so then what ends up happening is that as president, I appoint one of the two. And so in that case, my appointment will be for Mr. Seeger. I thank you both for your interest. And the procedure for this, Mr. Seeger, will be that you do need to sign the oath of office before entering into the position officially. This can be done either with Clerk Pecky or with one of our two notaries, who would be Mrs. Fraser or Mrs. Kane. The form is located at the district office and you would just need to call ahead for an appointment to come in and sign that. And then once you've signed that, then you're, you are a full part of the board and you're able to conduct votes with us as well. So again, thank you both for your interest. It was refreshing to see that we had two people from the, the town of St. Lawrence that were interested in applying for it and hopefully, you know, we can continue the interest as we move forward when we come up for spring election as well. So at this time, we'll then move to presentation and it is Q12 Survey Strategies Administrative Team. And I believe that Mr. Wolfram is going to be speaking about the Trust Action Team.
I am. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, indeed.
Good. Um, we ended up meeting at the last, I won't say the last moment, but the last two weeks of school, we felt it was important to go back to the Trust Action Team and take a temperature on how they were doing. The board requested to see if the committee would consider putting forth the Q12 again. Unanimous from the board members, and I think it's important to be able to listen to the staff members that they felt that the situation was still egregious enough where they felt as though we would be comparing apples to oranges. And that they wanted to follow through with their original directive to be able to take the Q12 again in the fall. I know our, our teachers were all over the board feeling an enormous sense of pride, accomplishment, and exhaustion all at the same time. But it was their sentiment that they, they felt it was best to, to leave the Trust Action Team to be able to have some respite and to regroup again with our same mission and focus of moving toward Q12 again in the fall.
All right.
And somewhat related to the positive work, the Trust Action Committee had worked quite heavily on praise and not just praise from the administrative team to our staff, but among the group. But while they were doing that, we also shared praise very widely with our legislators as well as with CISA Six. And they put together a pretty amazing but short little video on how the CISA Six districts were able to, the new term is pivot, or change course and adapt to things related to the pandemic. So I just wanted to play that short video for you and let's hope that this comes across well for you. Are you able to see a little computer with a globe right now?
Yep.
Okay, let's hope that becomes a video.
Because once again, I look at my numbers before, Tony Ebers is one of the statewide county real home K-12 schools, public and private. Part of the state's outreach to respond to and contain this spread of COVID-19 given the state. Mandated totally heavy and we begin on Wednesday, March 17th, and we give school districts ample time to plan for kids, families, educators, and staff.
Another 1 million Wisconsin kids in grades K-12 will be impacted. All schools across the state will be closed effective next Wednesday.
All right. Just had to share that because our staff did a phenomenal job. I hope you saw the food service staff in there. That was one of the featured pictures from one of the videos we had shared with CISA Six. But we shared numerous things that continue to flow across social media from our district in the Shinnon campaign with CISA Six. So some pretty amazing work happened in kind of a long weekend. Something that I think Mr. Coberry Booth and I have talked about and I think we'd agree, we didn't think we were gonna be able to, to do it in a single weekend. Oh, and Cory was in there. So yeah. It goes by fast, but I know they spotlighted a lot of, a lot of our staff in that. And I know that Mr. McGregor is on this evening. He did, did not have two board meetings in one night, so I think we're ready for him whenever you are, President Johnson.
Absolutely, Mr. McGregor. If you would love to go ahead, we would love to hear what you have to say.
And thank you for having me tonight. With me this evening, I have Mackenzie Beck, who is our college intern working with us for the summer. So it's a face that is getting more familiar around the high school for sure and as well at the elementary school. She is online virtually right now, listening in. I think next month, for the month of July, she'll probably be doing the presentation in my stead. But she wanted to listen in and kinda see what a school board meeting is all about. Mackenzie is a freshman at MSOE in their engineering program. Extremely smart young lady and she has had the ability to put up with both Ryan and myself on a daily basis. Anything I missed, Mackenzie?
No, that pretty much covered it all. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, hi, I'm Mackenzie. Like Matt said, I'm super excited to be on site with Manawha School too. It's really cool. I was actually a design intern at Hoffman for the past two summers, so it's such a cool opportunity to be onsite at the Manawha School to see the design unfold into the project. So it's good to be here.
And if I'm not mistaken, you did our last weekly update that we published on the website?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Beautiful work.
Thank you.
So to kind of roll into, from that, into our board update. As far as schedule items, you're starting to see a lot more stuff happening around the exterior of the building. You're seeing site concrete going in, you're seeing more of the metal panel going on now that it's onsite. We're getting that put on the fitness center as well as it actually is about ninety, ninety-five percent complete at the administration addition. So it was really a slow period outside of the building for quite some time and now you're actually starting to see things getting buttoned up, getting cleaned up. So that's all positive. Inside the additions, we have interior finishes going on. Drywall painting, a lot of items getting buttoned up. Our new main entrance into the high school, middle school is fully erected and we're gonna be putting the facade on that in the coming weeks. And then getting that buttoned up as well and finishing right along with the other two additions. Inside the renovated areas, the middle school area as well as the high school collaboration, there's a lot of framing, steel stud framing and drywall that's gonna be taking place over the coming weeks. As well as kind of throughout the entire building, there's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens going on. In the science area, that's probably where our main focus of underground plumbing is taking place. They kinda got everything buttoned up in the tech ed area and those two new bathrooms, the boys and girls bathrooms back in that area. And now they're moving into the science area, getting the floors cut up and underground plumbing work put in there. So then we can start moving similar to outside, out of the ground and getting things framed up and ready to go. Our big time crunch for a lot of these areas, middle school as well as the science area is casework. And we have that slated for coming like middle to late July. So that'll kinda be our, our big scheduled date. And I know it had been asked a couple times, hey, with the COVID and getting a jump on a lot of the summer renovation, are we gonna be done earlier? And that casework was the, the big player that really we had a date slated in their manufacturing schedule and that was something we couldn't change. So we're still on track for that. And getting that casework in middle to late July. As we talked about in the tech ed area, the plumbing is getting wrapped up in there. Those bathrooms are, the CMU walls are up in those bathrooms. And the next thing we're gonna start doing is getting some of the mechanical, electrical plumbing contractors phased out of there and getting the painter phased in there to paint the ceilings, paint the walls, and really brighten those spaces up. In the stage and commons, we have that space. You'd walk in there now and you probably wouldn't recognize it because the ceilings are all gone. The side walls on left and right stage are gone. And we're gonna be in the process of getting that ramp installed here in the very near future. And the overhead door into the band room. So that space is taking drastic steps in the right direction. At the elementary school, we got the demolition completed at the elementary school and we are in the process of, similar to the science area, doing the underground plumbing and getting prepared to do the, pour the floors back in and get the framing put in place there so that we can continue into the finish stages at the elementary school as well. Any questions on schedule or what's taking place onsite?
Would you want to talk a little bit about the sanitary sewer project and kind of what you found that was unexpected and the steps that are being taken to resolve that for the long term?
You bet, you bet. So I was gonna bring it up as part of our budget item, as kinda one of the big expenditures that took place over the last month. But Dr. Opera is completely correct. We had investigated the plumbing line that ran along the south side of the high school that picked up the tech ed rooms, the science rooms, and then it connects down adjacent to the kitchen and then heads back to the north and then down into the lower level and out of the building. So where it runs along the south side of the building there, it runs through the commons, the stage, choir, band, tech ed. It's an old cast iron pipe. The pipe is, I wouldn't say it's in great shape. It's not absolutely horrible shape, but it's corroded. And the worst part is it had a lot of low spots in it. So there was actually areas where we ran a camera through and the entire pipe was underwater or full of water. So we had investigated with our engineers as well as some vendors who came onsite to scope and camera the pipe further and what our potential options could be. And we looked at, with Dr. Opera, we looked at a couple different options. And the best option for the district for the long run came out to be running a new six-inch PVC or plastic line around the exterior of the building. Basically coming between the high school and the athletic field, the track. And then coming into the building and making two connections. One connection would be through the band room, which would pick up a sink and a water fountain in the band room as well as pick up all the plumbing for the science rooms, the high school science rooms. And then we have another entrance coming into the building that would pick up all the tech ed areas. And with that, it would also pick up the ninety-five addition on the southeast corner of the building where the art room is located. Currently that is pumped overhead into the tech ed spaces. So all in all, we, we met with contractors onsite. We kinda came up with our best plan in place to make this happen. And we have, that is the plan we came up with. And right now we have just shy of a hundred thousand dollars set aside for the repairs. It's a lot of money, but in the long run, it is probably the best solution for the district to have, provide a long, a long life cycle for the plumbing fixtures on that side of the building. Any questions on that one? So with that, right now, out of our contingency and allowances that we had set aside, we have used just shy of six hundred thousand dollars worth of our contingency, which leaves us with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining. And that does already include the, the sanitary line changes that we just talked about. So where we're sitting now, middle of June, we're, we're feeling pretty comfortable as to where we are. We have a lot of the demolition, all of the demolition complete. We have a lot of those unforeseen identified. I'd be lying if I said we're not gonna come up with more because I'm sure there'll be items that will pop up here and there. And I know Dr. Opera and myself and our team, we've been very transparent in talking about these items. Another item that will probably be up for discussion in the coming weeks or months is going to be some repairs to the asphalt pavement around the high school. So that's another item to come, that'll be coming about and kinda deciding what direction we wanna take it, if it's, if it's something we wanna look at more or in a larger dollar value or chew off, bite off a little bit less and and try and keep it manageable within our budget we currently have. So there'll be more conversation about that to come, but right now I, I feel pretty comfortable where we are with three quarters of a million dollars remaining in our contingency going into the month of July. Any questions on budget or schedule? Or just referendum in general?
Man, are we gonna be able to get a walkthrough on our Buildings and Grounds meeting on the eighth of July?
That is what I'm planning. And I'm hoping that everybody who is able and willing to attend will be able to make it.
And Russ is the chair of that committee and you had asked to move that meeting up by thirty minutes?
Yes.
So, so it looks like the start time will be 5:00 PM instead of 5:30.
Okay.
We'd be starting out on the football field first, looking at the repairs done out there and then putting on our hard hats, moving indoors with you. So any guests planned to come should let us know so we can grab a few extra hard hats.
I have a whole box right below my table, so we're, we're well-prepared.
Did that meeting invitation get sent out? I don't have it on my calendar.
I will double check, but if it wasn't, I certainly can do that for you.
Thank you.
It's not on my calendar either, so if you would please.
Yep.
Did you say that was at five o'clock?
Yes. Yes.
Do you know when you're gonna start seeding the uh green space?
On the vacant lot?
Yes.
It'll be coming up very soon. Um, they wanted to get past the uh blast of rain we had last uh last week and um make sure that everything, all the topsoil was kind of established, compacted. Um, and they'll probably be um, actually, let me take that back, Stan. I need to confirm with uh the excavator because he did have some reservation about seeding this time of year. Um, just with how dry it can be in the month of July and August. But I I will, I will confirm and I'll get a note over to Dr. Opera uh confirming when that will be seeded.
Okay, thanks.
All right, well, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Mackenzie, for joining us tonight and for providing us with all of that information.
Wonderful, thank you all and have a wonderful evening, stay safe.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, announcements, contributions to the district. We received a donation from the Greater Green Bay Community Foundation Incorporated, two hundred and fifty dollars on behalf of Tracy Agel for the high school band. Consent agenda, would any member like any item removed from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? Okay, we will then vote by general consent. And here you know dissent, the consent agenda carries. Uh, public, public comments, there was nothing in the chat box at all. Correspondence, we did receive thank you cards. Um, thank you to the bus drivers and helpers and thank you to the administration and teachers. Both were from Dan Holly and Tyler Thonlin. They certainly have appreciated everything that's happened. And on that vein, I did see tonight as well, um, that a community member had posted on what's happening in Manawa. Once again, thank you to the school district for their ongoing support. Our family appreciates this. So thank you to our administrators and our our teaching staff and our paraprofessionals for everything that has happened during this. It's it's been trying and um we appreciate it and the community definitely appreciates it as well. Board recognition. Um, we are going to recognize our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty retirees. Um, however, the official celebration of the retirement will take place at the district's annual recognition celebration, which will occur in September. The original celebration in May, of course, had to be delayed due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Mrs. Jean Frazier has served the school district of Manawa for forty-two years, beginning on August fifteenth, nineteen seventy-eight. The entire forty-two years has been in providing for the efficient and effective functioning of the district office and to support the district administrator. The role has changed in numerous ways over these many years. Mrs. Frazier has been a constant at these board of education meetings and has assisted board members in successfully serving all constituents of the district. Dr. Opera?
Well, this is a very strange way to say to goodbye to such important people and such longstanding members of our staff. Um, it doesn't feel quite right doing it when we can't be in person. But we we also couldn't let their retirement go without taking some time to comment on how important um both of these individuals have been to us. So um, it's my turn to talk about Jean, who's just been the most uh trusted and valued historian of the district. Um, she's everyone's go-to person whenever a question arises. Uh, we all say, ask Jean, she will know. Um, and she always has. And it's going to be very uh difficult to go out my door and not have Jean there to to ask questions and and to get her advice on things. Her knowledge and expertise includes everything from board operations to uh personnel matters. And it's been invaluable and it's going to be sorely missed. Um, Jean's also been uh my friend and confidant over the past six years that I've been working with the district. Um, and I'm really gonna miss her steadfast presence in the district office. Um, I wish her many blessed years of retirement and uh the opportunity to do everything that makes her heart happy. And Jean, it's just gonna be super difficult to say goodbye at the end of the month.
For me too, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Now we all can't cry because this is being recorded on camera.
Mrs. Shelley Keller first worked for CISA VI as a special education paraprofessional serving the school district of Manawa students beginning in nineteen eighty-nine. Then on August twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-eight, she was hired by the school district of Manawa directly and also became the district substitute caller. Mrs. Keller moved to the office clerical, paraprofessional and secondary attendance clerk in two thousand fourteen and continued serving as a subcaller. Mrs. Keller has also worked alongside her husband Kevin in coordinating the district's summer school program for many years. In all, Mrs. Keller has a total of thirty-one years of experience with the school district of Manawa. Mr. Wolf Graham?
I don't have my comments in front of me uh that I had emailed to Melanie earlier. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak from the heart and do my best to remember what I had sent her. Is that Shelley has the gift of being able to be firm, but with the kind grandmotherly heart that she does when addressing any parent that calls into the main office. Um, it's gonna be difficult to have somebody replicate that same firmness, but yet with love. I know that I would ask for her memoir because with as much as she's seen happen in that front office, even in the short amount of time that I've been there, it has not only been valuable, it's been memorable. And I think she could have a bestseller. So I look forward to her next chapter in her life. Uh, she will be missed, she will not be replaced, and she will now be taking over the role of full-time grandmother. Thank you for all you do, Shelley. I'm I'm not sure that I saw her on here, but uh my thoughts and prayers go with you in in a blessed retirement.
So thank you, Mrs. Frazier and Mrs. Keller, for the many, many years of service that you have provided to the district. Um, for me personally, you both have been incredibly incredibly invaluable. Um, Mrs. Frazier, your assistance in in assisting us as board members is irreplaceable in my mind. Um, it it's made our lives so much easier. And Mrs. Keller, having been in the office and and um having had the opportunity to to deal with her for three children, um, she has always been a lovely asset as well. So I wish you both the the very best and um I I do hope that you take some time to enjoy your retirement. Um, Dr. Opera, your report?
Uh, yes, with us this evening is our student council representative and it's Colin Mosher. So if Colin would like to take a moment and speak to what are the issues going on with students in this early part of the summer?
There's not really a whole lot going on, but for student council, we're planning, we're trying to plan a summer planning meeting. So trying to just figure out like when will work for everyone and like when we'll be able to do that. So that's pretty much it for student council right now.
Wonderful, are you hearing any um questions, concerns? Um, are students starting to talk about the reopening of schools?
Yeah, some people still aren't even sure if we're gonna have school, but.
Oh, yeah. So I can assure you, yes, we we are having school. I know you're on the phone, so you probably couldn't see the funny face I made when when I said, oh, yeah, we're having. Well, thank you, Colin. Um, are are there any other thoughts that you'd like to share with us at this point?
Uh, I don't think so.
Alrighty, um, in terms of the legislative update, we had our last legislative breakfast of the year uh this past Friday morning. Uh, and they still call it legislative breakfast, even though we're all doing the virtual meeting and there actually is no breakfast involved. Um, but otherwise that is a hallmark of that meeting is starting with a meal with our legislators um to have that informal conversation and get to a little better acquainted with them. And some of you as board members have had an opportunity to do that. Uh, we did say uh farewell and have a little tribute to uh Senator Luther Olson, who many of you have met. Um, he is retiring, so this will be the last legislative breakfast that he would be attending. And he has been a friend of education for a number of years and been on the um joint education uh committee for many years and uh the Blue Ribbon Task Force, most recently, has been a notable uh achievement for him as as a legislator. Uh, many of the other legislators, as they talked, spoke about um the unemployment insurance uh not working effectively in the state. Uh, there was a great deal of disappointment that there are some individuals who applied for unemployment immediately after uh the start of the pandemic and the businesses closing. And some of these individuals are still yet to see a single penny, uh which is extremely disturbing to the legislators. So um that was brought up by a number of them and and was a major issue that um they collectively plan to work on. Uh, the other frequently discussed uh item was the Department of Corrections. Uh, many of them are on a committee working on uh Department of Corrections issues. And one of the points they wanted to make was the low incidence rate of COVID nineteen within the correctional system. Uh, so they said potentially other larger institutions could learn from some of the practices they've maintained to to try to um slow the curve or um potentially stop the curve in some of the Department of Corrections facilities. Um, then I wanted to share a handout. Let me just see if I can bring that up on the screen and share with you. Since last we met, I have a new mouse and keyboard and I'm still adjusting to them a little bit, but the one thing I love about them and I celebrate every day, they're silent and I love that. So here we go. So the presentation that Mr. Nitski gave at the legislative breakfast um before the legislators had their opportunity to share was um what you see before you now, a a summary of uh a survey that he took from uh among the CISA districts. So we were asked to talk about our top five priorities. In the event that the legislators need to do a budget repair bill, um that's still being very closely monitored and the numbers aren't looking quite as dire as uh was initially predicted, um we still wanted to give them some advice in terms of impact on school districts as they look at the potential of needing to make cuts. So low-spending districts, we are one of those low-spending districts, uh protecting those funds. Uh, we were um projected in the biennial budget to go from nine thousand seven hundred dollars per student to ten thousand dollars. Uh, that's incredibly important and if there's any way we could maintain that, um, that would be at the top of not only our district's list, but a number of districts across the CISA. Uh, then special ed funding, or as it's known, Fund Twenty-Seven, uh also critical. Uh, again, the goal had been to gradually work toward um the state's commitment to pay two-thirds of special ed funding. Um, and they were making strides in that direction. We were only about at the one-third level, but um there was definitely intent to keep moving in the direction of increasing special ed funding. There's great concern about the mental health of young people. Um, we know uh being at home and not having the opportunity to be with their friends, with their teachers uh has been stressful. Um, and so we want to continue to support mental health and trauma-informed care. Maintaining the three-year rolling average for declining enrollment, also very important uh for the school district of Manawa, uh was fourth on the list across uh the CISA VI. And finally, um rural broadband, uh definitely a concern in our community and many communities across the state of Wisconsin. So those were the top five uh funding priorities. We were also asked to share some of the other things that were important to us. And that would be um moving as quickly as possible to give us the information. Uh, again, uh, there is some reluctance, I think, to make major decisions uh right before a significant election. Uh, but the sooner we have the information, uh the better we're able to plan. For example, we set the mill rate, um we, I'm speaking the royal we here. We're talking about the district electorate sets the mill rate at the annual meeting in October. Uh, so the sooner we have definitive uh budget implications, um the more agile we are in our ability to make funding adjustments. Uh, there was also a question about um knowing that we are going to need some personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies and some other unexpected expenses. Can the state provide any funding or provide the materials that we need to uh be a little bit less of a stressor on our budgets? Again, talking about knowing uh the answers before our annual meetings or as soon thereafter as possible. We asked about onsite testing. Uh, you've seen that in the Department of Corrections, you've seen that in many um residential care facilities. And it would be uh beneficial to have that at no cost for those individuals that would like it. And similarly, uh vaccination clinics conveniently located in districts and offered at no charge to students and staff should they desire it. Uh, all of this would be voluntary, but again, um for many of our families, it's difficult for them to access these resources if it's not provided locally. Um, we talked about statutory adjustments. As the legislators are looking at writing bills, that's one of the the many functions that they do during the summer during this time period. Uh, we talked about um rather than four aid payments, having either six or twelve aid payments. And ideally, twelve equal aid payments over the course of a year would certainly help us um stabilize the fund balance, which we've talked about quite often in finance committee meetings. Eliminating the minutes of instruction mandate um continues to be a popular one. Uh, we're held to a high standard through the assessment system. Uh, so each district has found that there are different ways of achieving the goal. So just counting minutes doesn't necessarily ensure that high-quality education is occurring. Uh, the start date um of September one has continued to come up as a concern. Uh, districts would like to have more flexibility. It isn't an option for our district this year because of construction and remodeling, but many of the districts wanted to start school earlier this fall to try to make up for lost time in the spring of the year where we know that we had to um really focus in on the standards that we covered because we couldn't possibly do everything in a virtual environment that we would accomplish in our face-to-face classroom opportunities. Again, closing the funding gap uh was very important and supporting the elimination of restrictions for hiring um retired teachers. Um, remember there's that period of seventy-five days of separation from the time a person uh retires to the time that they can come back and provide services to the district. We rely on our retired teachers uh for anything from substitute teaching. uh to any number of other services, um such as summer school instruction. Uh, so for as long as those folks are interested and maintain their licenses, um, we're very happy to uh enjoy their services. And finally, uh budget items. Uh, we wanted to make the legislators aware that our costs continue to go up um and e- even when funding does not. And so we listed the the high five, uh health insurance, um insurance in general, everything from auto to liability, uh salaries for all our personnel, utilities and transportation. Uh, those were the top five across the whole CISA. And what do we want for the fall? Uh, there were two quotes, um getting back to uh what we know to be a more traditional uh type of education for all our students. We miss them and I I think they miss us too. Um, and then allowing for local control and school boards to make the important decisions about reopening. So I'll I'll pause there at least to breathe for a second in case you have any questions. Uh, we are going to have a monthly enrollment report this month because you will be addressing uh some of the enrollment issues through open enrollment a little later on in the agenda under action items. And uh, we are currently working on the census and by we, I, that mostly is Mrs. Flynn. Uh, so she's getting the the mailing ready for the annual census of the district. Uh, school reopening, I'm still telephoning people to get a couple more people on the committee. Um, the state superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Mike Thompson uh announced that on June 22nd, next Monday, we will have uh the roadmap to reopening from the state. Um, that will be a helpful tool to use with our local committee in putting together reopening plans. However, you will see a preview of reopening uh for July 1, which is our summer school skills and drills um activities, as well as uh weightlifting, all of which will be happening here at the elementary building due to construction. I did want to ask the board's perspective on an equity statement. Um, you've probably seen through the OSUN news that I share with you that a number of districts have been um sharing statements. I'm looking to see if I can find an example. I may not be able to find it at the moment. Uh, but a number of districts have been putting out um statements in light of what's been happening around the world. Um, the protests um plus the anxiety over the closure. Um, didn't know if you wanted to direct me to draft something for you to consider um to share in terms of statement of equity. I'll pause and get your feedback.
I don't think it would be a bad idea, but if you draft something up, if we could all take a look at it and um see what our thoughts are compared to what you drafted up.
Um, I did suggest the potential of a special meeting next week. Um, so if you wanted to look at at something then, I could put something together. Um, Appleton has a very nice one. That's where I got the idea. And they partnered with um the mayor and the chief of police and did a joint statement, and it was very nice. Um, so perhaps we could do something like that, too. And um before I um end my remarks, I just wanted to let you know I was um contacted by Mandy Welch, who does human resources for the Wapaka County, um, to be on a small group of advisory interview um committee uh for the next director of the Department of Health and Human Services for Wapaka County. Um, right now, we have an interim individual uh that's serving in that capacity. Uh, so we would be um meeting this Friday morning at 8 o'clock. I did put out a list of draft questions and met with the county superintendent this afternoon after our DHS meeting. And um, so I will be sitting on that very small committee with Sheriff Wills and uh Chief, um, I believe it's pronounced Schleider or Schlitter from New London. Uh, so it's just the three of us. And then we're asked to uh give an advisory comment to the um Wapaka County Board of Supervisors as they look at selecting their next director. So if this person we meet on Friday isn't the person, uh, then they have a second candidate that they would like us to speak with. Thoughts? Comments? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your patience. I know that was a long one.
Thank you, Dr. Rapper. All right, school operations reports. Were there any questions regarding the reports for school operations for our principals? Any comments? Business-related reports, Mrs. O'Brien is off this evening. Um, did anyone have any questions that needed to be relayed back to her regarding her report? I see that uh we do have Mr. Elsner on tonight from Cobason. Did you have any comment to share with us?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Uh, so just a few things that we're doing at Cobason. Uh, we did go ahead as a company and order 25,000 face masks from FEMA. Um, so those will be distributed to all the terminals in Wisconsin. Um, and throughout the summer and all our downtime that we've had, we've been deep cleaning the buses and sanitizing them. Um, we've been working with a few bus contractors and seeing what's the best way to sanitize the buses uh with COVID-19. Uh, so we're working on that throughout the summer. Uh, we do have uh our annual bus inspections this Thursday and Friday. Um, so the uh state inspector will be here then to inspect everything. Uh, we have mechanics from Oshkosh, Seymour and Okanto coming up uh to help prepare the buses for those. Um, and also during the summer, we use this time to go through all the routing uh to make sure we're running them as efficient as possible. And then I'm not sure, I was uh shared with Mrs. O'Brien, uh, the group stops that we proposed uh in Manawha. Did you guys receive those at all?
I don't believe those have been forwarded to to a committee at this point.
Okay, all righty. Um, so if, once you guys do get those or whatever and have questions, um, we're just trying to compile a few group stops, like the bowling alley um is one of them, uh where we don't have to stop um so many times on the road and stop traffic. So we're just working on making those a little safer and more uh compact. Um, but at other than those things, that's all I have. Any questions for us?
Thank you, Jacob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, director's reports. Um, are there any questions at all for Mr. Corubius or Ms. Brower about the reports? Any comment from either of you?
My camera is not on, but I assure you that I am here.
Your camera is on, Stan. I can see you.
Did, did you have some comments to share with us, Mr. Corubius?
Oh, no, I did not. Sorry. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Board comments, do any board members have any comments to share publicly? Committee reports, does anyone have any questions for any of our committee chairs? Or does any committee chair have any comments? This is really easy. Unfinished business. Item A, consider approval of policy updates, volume 29, number one. Policies 2370, 3122.01, 4122.01, 7540, 7540.02, 7540.04, and 7544 as presented. Um, and again, because we are participating virtually and we do have members listening that are dialing in by phone, um, we do ask that you state your name prior to making a motion, please.
Bruce Scheller. I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve policy updates, volume 29, number one, to include policies 2370, 3122.01, 4122.01, 7540, 7540.02, 7540.04, and 7544 as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
I have a second by Mr. Forbes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will move forward by a roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. New business, item 22A, consider approval of section 504 handbook as presented.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the section 504 handbook as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
A second by Mr. Holman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson has an aye as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item B, consider approval of English language handbook as presented.
Russ Holman, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the English language handbook as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Petke, second.
A second by Mrs. Petke. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye as well from Mrs. Johnson. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item C, consider approval of Title I Schoolwide Program Plan Handbook as presented.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Man- Manawha Board of Education approve the Title I Schoolwide Program Plan Handbook as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item D, consider approval of the 2020-2021 instructional learning, excuse me, instructional technology purchases as presented.
Stan Forbes, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the school year 2020-2021 instructional technology purchases as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I second that motion.
I have a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item E, consider approval of the 2020-21 food service vendors as presented.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve a school year 2020-2021 food service vendors as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Want to flip a coin for who I should call on for that one?
Give it to Bobby.
We'll give it to Mrs. Petke as the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item F, consider approval of the 2020-21 food service meals and milk prices as presented.
Mrs. Petke, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the school year food service mil- meal and milk prices as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item G, consider approval of the 2021 support staff wage increases as presented.
Mrs. Petke, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the school year 2021 support staff wage increase as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I will second that.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item H, consider approval of Whipfley to provide audit services for school year 2021 as presented.
Mrs. Petke, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve Whipfley to provide district audit services for the 2021 school year as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item I, consider approval of unused vacation time COVID-19 exception as presented.
Stan Forbes, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the unused vacation time one-time COVID-19 exception for the 2019-2020 school year as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Bruce Scheller, second.
Second by Mr. Scheller. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson has an aye as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item J, consider approval of vision insurance premium holiday as presented.
Russ Holman, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the vision insurance premium holiday as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Petke, second.
Second by Mrs. Petke. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson has an aye as well. Carries by a roll call vote. Item K, consider approval of open enrollment applications for school year 2021 using board-approved available seats as presented.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the open enrollment application for the 2020-2021 school year using the board-approved available seats as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion?
Do we, are we anywhere close to our limit? Do we, are we anywhere close to our limit on any of these classes?
We are not.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson has an aye as well. Item L, Consider Approval of a One-Year Waiver of the Timelines Included in EG 5112A.
I'll move that the Manawha Board of Education approve a one-year waiver for the timelines included in Administrative Guidelines 5112A, Admission to Kindergarten for Those Families Requesting Early Admission to Kindergarten for the 2021 School Year Due to the Limitations Created by COVID-19 Pandemic.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Carries by a roll call vote. Item M, Consider Approval of WIA Annual Renewal as Presented.
Russ Holman, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the WIA Annual Renewal Notice as Presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, Russ Johnson, I have a second there.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And that is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item N, Consider Preliminary Endorsement of Summer School Weight Room and Skill Drill Sport Activities to Begin July 1 as Presented.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawha Board of Education consider preliminary endorsement of the summer school 2020 weight room and skill drill sports activities begin on July 1, 2020, as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second that.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item O, First Reading of Policy 8407 School Resource Officer Program as Presented. Are there any questions or comments on the first reading of the Niola policy? Okay, the policy will be up for approval at the regular July Board of Education meeting. Item P, Consider Board of Education Meeting Format Beginning in July. So in this case, we have to pick the format we would like to use.
You have a lot of options available to you. We could have live meetings. We're constrained a little bit with everything being at the elementary due to the construction, but we could go down to the elementary library. And we could probably do physical distancing for board members, Mrs. O'Brien and I, and Mrs. Flynn, with guests and the other administrative team members continuing to be virtual. We could use the library for live meetings and have people be voluntary. You know, those that want to come in person will set up for that, and those that want to stay virtual could do that. Meetings could just stay virtual in July and August until the remodeling is done, which means your boardroom, which is now the high school office, they will have moved back into their facility and opened up your boardroom so that you could resume boardroom meetings in there. Or you could choose any other suggestion that you might come up with. Those were just a few brainstorms I had this afternoon.
I guess I'll make the first comment. With us having a new board member joining us, I wouldn't mind doing either a library, one of the libraries, just so he can feel a little bit more, maybe if I want to call it part of the team. Just, just a thought from me.
Would you care to make that into a motion, Mr. Johnson?
Somehow I could. I move that the Manawha Board of Education make either the, I don't know which one, the library? So we're off, library is a place for our board meetings in July and August.
What's library?
MOS library, so you'd need to refine it, you know, if you would pick option one or option two?
All right, all right, gotcha, gotcha.
So option one would be kind of mandatory that we all are there, and option two is, you know, kind of a blend. If you wish to attend in person, you can, and if you wish to attend virtually, you can as well.
I'll, I'll do number two. I move that the Board of Education approve the MOS library could be used for live meetings for those board members, administrative team members who wish to attend in person, and Mrs. Flynn with guests and the rest of the board admin team attending virtually.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And that was Mrs. Petke?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson will do an aye as well. Next meeting date, we need to schedule a tentative special board of education meeting for the week of June 22nd through 26th for the purpose of reviewing and endorsing proportions of the school district of Manawha's school reopening plan.
Right now, Tuesday and Wednesday are looking quite wide open.
I guess the question would, would be, I was going to say the question would be, Luke, what time can you make meetings?
Should, should be anytime around five or later.
Okay.
I like the Wednesday idea.
How long are we thinking this meeting's going to be?
I'm hoping relatively short, but, but again, I have been spending so much time with the reopening materials and the CISA superintendents, the statewide superintendents, the county superintendents, the Department of Health. So I'm, I'm living and breathing this stuff every day. I don't know how many questions you might have about the reopening because we really have to make something that's practical and works for our local community, which I, I think we've come up with some really great plans to do that, but you may have more questions because you haven't had as much time to spend with all of this information. And there is a lot of information to digest.
Well, I do have a dentist appointment with some dental work at 3:30. I will try to join if that's what we choose to do on that Wednesday.
I would like to suggest a 6:30 time.
I'm okay with that.
That would be June 24th at 6:30?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Yes, sure. Works for you?
Yep, probably.
All right. All right, then, we're looking at July 7th, ad hoc recognition committee, five o'clock, and that, I assume, is not going to be virtual anymore. Obviously, these are now all changed. July 7th is also Policy and Human Resources at six. July 8th is Buildings and Grounds at five o'clock with a site tour and virtual, well, and onsite meeting. July 8th is Curriculum at seven o'clock. July 9th is Finance at 5:30, and July 25th is the Class of 2020 Commencement Ceremony at 11:00 a.m. at the athletic complex. And July 27th is going to be our regular board meeting. I am looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
Russ Holman, I make a motion that we adjourn?
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mrs. Petke.
Second by Mrs. Petke. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Meeting adjourned at 8:40 p.m. Thank you all very much. Mr. Seager, just remember to make an appointment, to stop in and be able to sign your oath of office so we can get you rolling, and congratulations and welcome to the board, and we will see you at our next meeting.
And I will do a
Thank you.
Welcome, Luke, and I will do a little bit of training with you, and you will get a district email address. And I did send it to your personal email address, the invitation to the next meeting, but officially, you will have a district email that we'll use for conducting all our business. So, thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Have a good night, everyone.